Council meeting for August 8th. We will begin with our Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Mr. Jim Ake and then followed by our invocation by Pastor Duckworth of the New Joy Lutheran Church. So let's rise and face the flag, please.
Please join me as we honor our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we give you thanks and praise for all who enter into public service, for all who are interested in the affairs of our community. Send your Spirit upon this meeting this evening, oh God. Grant wisdom and patience and understanding. And overall, oh God, grant a commitment to the common good that the deliberations and decisions this night may serve our community and in serving our neighbor, give you glory. In your holy and gracious name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, and I call the meeting to order. Our first item of business would be the note, the presence of a quorum, please. Clerk?
Joe Edwards.
Here.
Bob Horkey.
Here.
Chuck Lehman.
Here.
Jim Ake.
Here.
Cindy Spoljerick.
Here.
Steve Hoover.
Here.
Mark Keen.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you. The agenda was circulated. I believe there's copies in the back. As far as I know, the agenda does stand as presented. So we will move on to the approval of minutes from our meeting of July 25th. Those have been posted and circulated. Is there a motion regarding our minutes, please?
I do have one correction, Chuck. Under City Council comments, we were asked to consider a $1,500 payout to help out with Christmas in July. It should be Westfield and lights. So with that correction, I move to approve the minutes with that exception.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. At this time, we will open the mic and we will allow any residents who wish to speak to items not on the agenda, anything that's not on the agenda, you're welcome to come forward at this time. Do you have any cards?
I have one card, or two cards, actually. First one from Sharon Williams.
Welcome.
Well, I'm here and most of the time I always say the same thing and he objects to it. So I'm talking about water again. You're gonna build, you're gonna build, you're gonna build, you're gonna give permission, you're gonna give permission, permission. This is what I am left with as far as my well is concerned. I contracted with a well digger. I did not know he didn't have a drill because I didn't know that. But anyway, he gave me 20 more feet than I already had. Now, I wouldn't have paid 20 more feet, I'm smart enough to know this, for water that I already had. So he gave me from 160 to 180. But I've still got this and it's nothing but mud because of the lowering of the aqua flare. Whether you want to believe it or not, that's just the way it is. And that's what development has brought me. Now, I know I can't do anything about that and I don't really give a two hoots, but selling homes, one of the things I wanted to bring up was the kind of, I don't think you're gonna have enough water for these developments to even flush the stools. Now flushing the stools is of very prime importance and taking a good shower. Okay. And selling the homes, I don't particularly enjoy that you advertise selling the homes for better education because I want to tell you what better education is. I am the grandmother and probably the only grandmother in Hamilton County that has five valedictorians, one that just received a full scholarship from Texas University. He's number three in math in Illinois, okay? All of them have 398, 400, 398, 400, 400, 397, and the last one was 400, the one that's going to college this fall. The girl Emily has 396 and she is Mensa. Hannah is 3.9 and she is a criminologist and she is teaching kindergarten right now. They all have accounting jobs. They are very well educated. One is a biologist and he is doing work in that field. My two boys were electrical engineers and were educated in the old Westfield schools, okay? James graduated at Purdue University with a 3.98 and he has worked for Boeing for 35 years. Stephen graduated at 4.0 at ITT and he's an electrical technician also. He has worked there 35 years. You can't get much better employment than that. My daughter graduated with 3.9 as a legal secretary and worked from ITT. She worked at Baker &amp; Daniels Law Firm and she worked there 10 years before she was hired at Noblesville Schools. She worked there as a legal secretary for Dr. Williams, Dr. Ellis, Dr. Lehman, she was executive secretary, and she worked for Dr. Connor and she worked for one year for Dr. Beth Niedermeyer. At present, she is still doing Anthem Insurance, which is what Dr. Lehman gave her for the last three, four years that she worked. And she is still doing Anthem Insurance. You can't get much better education than that, but I don't think selling the homes for better education in the city of Westfield is gonna do it. Neither is the water gonna last very long. You're not gonna have enough money, you're not gonna have enough water to flush the stools. That's what I got to say.
Thank you.
I have one additional card. Mr. McMeed.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm McMeed. I live on Oak Road in Westfield. I just wanted on the record that a Westfield citizen honors and appreciates our police and fire. And I want it said that, yes, blue lives matter. All lives matter. My wife fell seven and a half weeks ago and broke a leg and three ribs, very painful, 911. Our two ambulances were busy. Our communications among our police and fire is so great that within minutes Noblesville Fire, Westfield Fire, and Carmel Ambulance was there. They work together like they'd trained together forever. They indeed are experts. And I will tell you that if I'm ever in a position to do so, I will take a bullet for any one of them.
Thank you, Mick.
That's all the cards I have, sir.
Anyone else? Hearing, seeing none, we will move on. At this point, we will move to the approval of the claims, please.
Move to approve the claims.
Motion to approve, second, please.
I'll second.
Ms. Drake, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Claims are approved. Thank you. At this time, we don't have any special presentations scheduled or miscellaneous business. I would like to take this opportunity to bring to the public's attention that we have received or have completed and received the details and documentation of the special census that we just completed. So I'd like to share some of those details with everyone tonight. We want to give a special shout out to Tammy Havard. Tammy, is Tammy here this evening? Hi. Stand up. This is the young lady that has worked diligently for months and months, kind of led the charge on behalf of the city. So we owe her a big round of applause for all her help and effort. There were days when I know that there was a little frustration and she and John, John worked hard on it as well, John Rogers. But here's some data that I'd like to share with you. Our census population from 2010 was 30,068. Our population as of this year, 2016, is officially 36,854. That's a 22.6% increase. At the same time, we counted households and our housing count has gone to 14,034 from a housing count of 11,209. And in looking at those numbers, we had a 22% increase in population but a 25% increase in housing and residential units. So it appears that we may be attracting either some empty nesters or singles or something because our actual occupancy rate might be down just a little bit, it appears. So as we look forward to the next few years and we see what's being planned out there and we'll hear some of that tonight, we are seeing quite an increase and it does put pressure on our, some of our services and it is important to us, public safety, the infrastructure, just literally maintaining the community that we all think of as our quaint little small town of Westfield and it's not quite that much anymore. We will use these numbers and it will get us a return. The good news is that we obligated ourselves for an expense to do this and not necessarily does the government always do everything perfectly, but we're really proud of Tammy. We had a budget and we came in under budget and we will actually be getting a credit back for these services. So our return could be even a little quicker than we anticipated, so it's pretty much all good news. We appreciate everybody's cooperation. Pretty much everybody should have had a knock on the door or a contact and we certainly appreciate everybody's response in making the entire census a success. So thanks, Tammy, staff, John. Appreciate it so much. Moving forward, we will move to old business and our first item is consideration of Ordinance 16-13. It was introduced on June 13th. It's moved through the process and it is for adoption consideration tonight. Will be presented by Kevin Todd. Welcome, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Good evening for the record. Kevin Todd with the Economic and Community Development Department. This item before you is an amendment to the Bridgewater PUD specific to a new proposed 10,000 square foot professional office building which would be located on the real estate highlighted on the screen. This item was introduced, as mentioned, at your June 13th City Council meeting, went through the Plan Commission process, received a public hearing at the Plan Commission on July the 18th, and is now coming to you with a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission which was received at their August 1st meeting. The petitioner is available this evening to answer any questions and is not planning to make a presentation this evening. At this time, staff would recommend approval of Ordinance 16-13 as presented. If you have any questions of me, I'm happy to answer them at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. This is up for action this evening. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve Ordinance 16-13, the Bridgewater PUD District Amendment for Parcel M3.
Sir, a second, please.
I have a question.
Sir, a second and then we'll open it.
Second.
Thank you. It's open for discussion.
Can I ask a question, please? I was not aware, and maybe you can just clear this up, that the light, it says ground LED uplighting on the pier. Was that part of the original petition to have ground lighting, lighting up that pier with the signs?
Yeah, that wasn't specifically mentioned. That's permitted by our sign ordinance to have uplighting as long as it's directed to the sign.
Okay, but this wasn't in the, this wasn't in the original package that they brought, right?
I'm not sure if it was part of the original filing or not. It's been part of the Plan Commission information since it was at a public hearing. There was a little bit of additional information that was added, a revised exhibit or two and that may have been one of them that calls that out, but it's permitted per UDO.
But was it specifically permitted for Bridgewater?
Yeah, that part of the sign ordinance hasn't changed in many years.
Okay. It starts to concern me when we have that uplighting and it can get in your face when you're driving, so.
Yeah, as long as it's shielded.
Right, and it didn't specify that, so that's why I was concerned.
We'll check that at the sign permit phase.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to Ordinance 16-24, Harmony PUD. Previous introduction on May 9th, gone through the process. It's up for adoption consideration this evening. It will be presented by Jesse Pullman. Welcome, Jesse.
Good evening, President, members of the council. Jesse Pullman with the Economic and Community Development Department. This ordinance is an amendment specific to the apartment area of the Harmony PUD. The real estate consists of 12 acres on the north side of 146th Street, west of Ditch Road. As you may recall, this property and the proposed amendment was introduced to you at your May 9th meeting and at that time, the introduced ordinance also included proposed changes to the commercial area. Since then, the petitioner has chosen to split that ordinance so that the apartment area changes could be considered separately from the commercial area changes. So as a result, the commercial area petition is still being considered by the Plan Commission and is not a part of this ordinance. This ordinance is limited to just the apartment area. The apartment area is proposed to be developed by the J.C. Hart Company and has a pending development plan for the 12-acre property that includes 257 multifamily dwellings. The development plan is being considered by the Plan Commission and is subject to the council's action on this ordinance this evening. Briefly, since it's been May, since you've seen this petition, the four areas that the amendment addresses includes, first, reducing the side yard setback for the dumpster enclosure that abuts the future commercial area. Two, reduces the number of garage spaces required as a result of the L-shaped design of the buildings and the end units. Three, permits a blade sign or a projecting sign on the clubhouse along 146th Street. And then the fourth and final aspect of the amendment is modifying the west property line buffer as it abuts the adjacent AGSF1 property to reflect the buffer that was in place prior to the adoption of the UDO. This ordinance received a public hearing at the June 6th and July 5th Plan Commission meetings and comes to you with a unanimous favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission. This ordinance is eligible for adoption tonight. I'm available if you have any questions of the department and the petitioner and the representative are also here if you have any questions of them tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. This is up for consideration. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Motion made and seconded. Open for discussion, please. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. It's approved. Moving to Ordinance 16-25, Park Street, PUD District. Jesse Pullman.
Again, thank you, Jesse Pullman, for the record. This item is an ordinance to be known as the Park Street and the Junction PUD followed by Bob Beauchamp. The subject properties include 226 and 228 Park Street, which are two existing residential structures located on the north side of Park Street across from the Italian House and the rail. The properties are currently zoned MF1 and the PUD would allow for the adaptive reuse of the properties consistent with the current transitions occurring in that corridor as well as consistent with the Grand Junction Subdistrict Addendum. This item was introduced to you at your July 11th meeting and it received its public hearing at the August 1st Plan Commission meeting. This ordinance also comes to you with a unanimous favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission. In addition, the petition has received support by the Grand Junction Task Group following a presentation of the petition to them on August 2nd. This ordinance is eligible for your adoption tonight. I'm available again if the council has any questions and the petitioner is also here this evening to answer any questions you may have of him. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Sir, motion on Ordinance 16-25, please.
Move to approve Ordinance 16-25, Park Street, PUD District. Second.
Thank you. Open for discussion. Hearing, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion carries. Ordinance is approved. Moving to new business, our first item on the agenda tonight is the, is Ordinance 16-27, Woodwind Plan Unit Development, Woodwind PUD. This is a council introduction tonight. It will move along schedule for a public hearing, so it will move through the process. It is an introduction. There will be no hearing or comments. Jesse?
Thank you. For last time again, Jesse Pullman with the Economic and Community Development Department. As noted, this item is the introduction of an ordinance to be known as the Woodwind PUD filed by Polty Homes. The subject properties include roughly 780 acres generally located between 146th Street and 166th Street and then from the east, existing Woodwind Golf Course to west, Shelbourne Road, as shown here on the exhibit on your screen. The properties are currently zoned AGSF1 and the PUD would allow for the mixed-use development to include primarily single-family residential uses but would also allow for some multifamily uses as well as office and commercial uses. This item's on your agenda for an introduction this evening and is scheduled to receive a public hearing at the September 6th Plan Commission meeting. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Joe Simi with Ice Miller and David Compton with Polty Homes to further present the petition to you.
For the record, my name is David Compton. I'm Vice President of Land Acquisition for Polty Homes of Indiana and appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you this evening to present an overview of the Woodwind Development of Westfield. I want to thank all the folks that have worked on this to date, the development team, the architects, the engineers, and the public that have provided input since we first put Woodwind Golf Course under contract in January of 2016. For those of you that don't know Polty Homes, we've been in business since 1950 and been in the city of Indianapolis since 1994. We build in the city of Westfield today and have three brands, Polty, Centex, and Dell Web. We are only proposing to build the Polty brand within the Woodwind Development. Woodwind Golf has been in the Indianapolis area, or Westfield area, since 1988. It was constructed by R. N. Thompson Development Corporation, actually, Land Innovators was the original constructor, I'm sorry, and is Westfield's only public golf course. They've been a great civic partner over the years, raising over $6 million for the course for fundraisers, junior golf programs, as well as an Evans Scholarship Program. Unfortunately, golf is not what it was in the 90s. The projected growth has not come to where it wanted to be. Just this week, Nike has decided to get out of the golf business, leaving many pros standing with endorsement deals that will be worth nothing. We strongly believe that preserving the Woodwind Golf Course benefits all residents of the city of Westfield. We develop and build communities across the United States and look forward to working with the city as well as the neighbors and other concerned residents regarding the Woodwind Golf Club and the surrounding proposed plan unit development. Our goal is simple, is to create an innovative master plan, highly amenities community, highly amenitized community with the Woodwind Golf Course as its centerpiece. First, we draw our attention to the 2007 Comprehensive Plan which identifies this area of Washington Township as the new suburban area. The Woodwind proposed development comprises originally of nine parcels. Today, with a deduction of one parcel from the original filing in this area right here, it is now comprised of six parcels. The elimination of 48 acres eliminated 119 units from the proposed land plan. We are joined on the east by the existing Harmony Development as well as the Town West PUD that runs along 146th Street. Cal Atlantic has a proposal in front of the Plan Commission right now for Liberty Ridge PUD and the Bent Creek Community, which has already received plat approval. The land plan for Woodwind has its origins back to January of this past year. The 2007 Comprehensive Plan encourages the promotion of innovative development, encourages the development of bicycle and pedestrian trails and pathways to improve connectivity and a trailway system that is consistent with the city's alternative transportation plan. We listened to what was the concerns over earlier proposals on Woodwinds and other concerns about the new suburban area and a different type of development. The curvilinear street plan that you see in front of you provides for a major trail system connecting through the project, flowing streets that curve gracefully to slow traffic down, oversized cul-de-sacs, and a hierarchy of trails beyond just the typical sidewalks that we see within a community and the perimeter path systems. But the suburban residential area is an important area. We wanted to pull in a lot of the rural character of the area by doing a different type of buffer. If you look at the Comprehensive Plan, it calls for more of a natural buffer, no mounding. We're gonna pick up the Black Horse Fence, which is not only predominant around Woodwind but is predominant to that area. Additionally, the entranceway monumentation will be of a cobblestone lower profile rather than the brick that you might see in other master plan golf course communities within the city of Westfield. The curvilinear plan has not only a dedicated trail system but streets that flow throughout the project, creating a non-structured flow, creating varied setbacks, not just 25 feet, setbacks can be almost up to 100 feet. So the houses flow in and out, traffic slows down, oversized cul-de-sacs and larger lots are part of the development. And in the end, because of the lot and the configuration, we end up with 20% less pavement for the municipality, in this case, Westfield, to maintain over the long term. Let's talk about Woodwind. The original course was a core area of 160 acres in this area right here with the clubhouse north of 161st Street. Unfortunately, the current course as a daily fee course is not economically sustainable as not only discussed by the Thompson family but the current operators, Matt Cohot and Doc O'Neil. So our goal in doing the land planning and looking at this area was not just to leave the course the way it was, but was to modernize and update the golf course to create a long-term sustainable platform for the Woodwind Golf Course and the master plan community that was part of it. This involved the relocation of four golf holes, holes four, five, six, and seven from the center area of the course today to an area that now wraps up around the golf course clubhouse with a slight adjustment to the driving range. This investment will provide a whole new golf course for the city of Westfield and its residents and the public to play on. Additionally, it provides some fantastic homesites within the community. But that would only take us so far. We also needed to provide great amenities for part of the golf course. That involves keeping the rural setting. The existing clubhouse is not- The existing clubhouse is not proposed to be changed. The existing banker's barn on site, which is used for golf cart storage, is not proposed to be changed. Any additional buildings that are added through the site will pick up the rural motif that's already existing in the clubhouse area. We're proposing to enhance the existing pavilion with catering kitchen and AV equipment and rebuilding and refurbishing part of it. In this area here, we're proposing to add a recreation building that will have an indoor sport court, also indoor workout facilities, and then three swimming pools in a configuration that overlooks the lake. So you end up with a center of activity that's around the golf course. I want to thank Doc and Matt. They're here tonight, Doc O'Neal, Matt Cohot. They've been involved in the redesign of the golf course, but also the amenity area. They've actually been approached by someone who would like to do a restaurant in this area. So you get a feel that this becomes a community hub for a larger community, a place where people gather, bring their families to not only play golf, but to enjoy a master plan community. Our commitment is to keep the course open to the public. However, everyone who lives within the community will be social members at the golf course. This helps provide the long-term financial stability through monthly dues paid by the residents to be part of the club. In summary, the overall master plan of the Woodwind Golf Course development is an innovative plan, one's never been built, the curvilinear plan's never been built within the city of Westfield. It minimizes the houses that back up to roads. The buffers are native and nature, and we've been, tried to be sensitive to surrounding uses. In this area here, we completely left the golf course. In this area here, there's a fifty-foot buffer around most of this existing home here, and there's buffers that we have added that meet or exceed the comprehensive plan as well as the zoning ordinance. We tried to make this community fit in the rural area that it exists and also within the boundaries of the proposed new suburban. Let's conclude with talking a little bit about the housing opportunities. We're proposing five distinct residential communities on the plan. Thirty percent of the product will be targeted for empty nesters. The build-out will not be quick. We expect the build-out to be between ten and thirteen years. Finally, we've started the process of walking down the road. Tonight is the first step in front of a public setting. We've scheduled information, two informational meetings on Thursday, August eleventh, and Tuesday, August twenty-third at the Woodwind Pavilion for more input prior to the September sixth Plan Commission hearing. We're not expecting, I think it was misquoted in the Indianapolis Business Journal, but we are not expecting a vote in October from the Plan Commission. We know and realize that this is a process, and that much more public input is not only needed, but welcome to make this an even better plan. We thank you, and we appreciate your time and consideration and this opportunity to be here tonight and be part of the team that continues to enhance and make Woodwind a great golf course, open to the public in Westfield, and a great community around it. Thank you for your time.
This is, as stated, an introduction tonight. It will move through the process. We do list on the agenda the soonest that these dates could come up. Obviously, as Mr. Compton stated, it probably will not be on this time schedule. It will be a little slower. So tonight is an introduction. Are there any comments before we pass this on? Okay. Thank you so much. It moves forward. Moving to ordinance sixteen dash twenty-eight, Spring Mill Trails, PUD. Amanda Rubidoo. Amanda, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, President, members of the council. My name is Amanda Rubidoo with the Economic and Community Development Department. Before you this evening for introduction is a text amendment to the Spring Mill Trails PUD. For your reference, the area that would be affected by this amendment is the remaining portion of the Waters Edge Development located just south of one hundred and eighty-sixth Street and west of Casey Road. The requested amendment would continue the same standards previously approved in two thousand and thirteen for the first section of Waters Edge and contains the same language regarding vinyl siding, garage door treatments and diversity, and some construction standards. Tonight is an introduction, and the proposal will follow the normal zoning process. It is scheduled for a public hearing and Plan Commission meeting on September sixth. If all goes according to plan, this item could be back to you as early as your October tenth meeting. John Dobishewitz with Nelson &amp; Frankenberger is here on behalf of the petitioner, and staff is available should the council have any questions. Thank you.
Counsel, introduction. Any comments? Any questions?
I have one kind of question and comment, if you will. If I'm to read this right, this is pretty much just kind of degrading our standards as what's currently there, correct? I mean, we're looking now at vinyl, we're looking at, I mean, that's what it looks like, so I'm just looking for clarification there.
Thank you. John Dobishewitz with Nelson &amp; Frankenberger here this evening on behalf of MI Homes. The proposal that's in front of the council this evening is to enhance the standards that were adopted as part of the ordinance for Spring Mill Trails relative to the section that MI builds in today. This was a standard and an amendment that was adopted by the council in two thousand and thirteen for Section One. We're asking for those same standards to be applied to the continuation of the development in Sections Two and Three that are identified, outlined in yellow on the proposal. So it was determined by the council in two thousand and thirteen that this standard was a standard that was preferred to the standard that was adopted for Spring Mill Trails. It's not a degradation or a request to reduce the standard that's in place today. It's a request to modify the standard that was approved for Spring Mill Trails so that MI can continue development of the subdivision, meeting the expectations of the residents who have purchased homes there.
Any other questions?
John, you may want to state why the change was asked for.
The change was requested in two thousand and thirteen because the vinyl thickness was point zero four eight. I think this is a reduction by two one-hundredths of a milliliter, excuse me, millimeter rather than liter. The request was done so that would broaden the amount of colors that are available in the marketplace for homes to be constructed within the area. As you get up to that higher milliliter, millimeter thickness for vinyl, the selection of colors is reduced dramatically. So MI asked the council, and the council approved in two thousand and thirteen, the request that would allow an enhancement or a broader range of colors that would be available for homes. When the council considered that, they also asked for additional concessions from MI. MI granted those. Those were with regard to garage door design and other construction enhancements that were both done on-site and for individual homes that are enumerated within the ordinance. So there was one standard in place back in two thousand and thirteen that was for two one-hundredths of an inch thicker vinyl siding for the homes to be constructed, and the amendment that was granted allowed for a greater variety in colors, as well as diversity enhancements to the garage door designs within the neighborhood, as well as additional design considerations, the trim of the homes being white in color, as well as a couple other items relating to window treatment on the houses.
If I remember correctly, and there have been a few petitions before us since then, but I believe that we saw samples of the two sightings and we couldn't really tell the difference. I mean, it was a very small difference, and there were advantages to going to, you know, the color availability. I think we saw the color samples as well. I mean, that's what I remember, and that's part of the reason that those changes were made then.
Thank you. Any other comments? Unless there's an objection, this will move through the process. Ordinance sixteen dash twenty-nine, Junction North Planned Unit Development, presented by Kevin Todd. Welcome, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Good evening again. For the record, Kevin Todd with the Economic and Community Development Department. The item before you this evening for introduction is a request for a new planned unit development called the Junction North PUD, located at the southwest corner of Union Street and Hoover Street in downtown Westfield. Property is approximately one and a half acres in size and currently consists of three residential lots. Project would be to create up to five residential lots as indicated on the screen. The proposed PUD ordinance establishes bulk and density standards for lot size and setbacks, as well as establishes architectural requirements and building character exhibits for the project. The proposal is consistent with the vision that is laid out in the Grand Junction Implementation Plan, and the petitioner met with the Grand Junction Task Group on August second and received support from the group at that meeting. This item is scheduled for a public hearing at the Advisory Plan Commission on September the sixth, and will return to you for adoption consideration at a later date. The petitioner is available for questions this evening, as am I, if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments before passing this on?
I think this is going to be great. Hope it works.
It moves through the process. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, at this time, we'll move to ordinance sixteen dash thirty-one. We'll also take, together with thirty-two, is that correct, Mr. Crawford? Do those together? Welcome.
My name's James Crawford, partner with Craig Devault. We're serving as bond counsel on these transactions. Ordinance thirty-one is an ordinance that authorizes the issuance of, not to exceed two million dollars' worth of GO bonds. This is just an introduction. It will come up for a public hearing and adoption at your next meeting. The ordinance thirty-two is the companion ordinance with that, the additional appropriation of those funds that also will be noticed for a public hearing at the meeting on the Be happy to answer any other questions.
For council, this is a part of our operating budget strategy. It's the same sort of matter you considered last year, is our tax rate strategy to fund, as we've noted in the language, certain equipment such as police, public works, and fire fleet. So this will be part of our normal cadence as we get to this point of the year, proceeding in the forthcoming year to fund the budget. So just a real concise description, reminding you that's what this strategy is about. Any questions for me or really the bond counselor? But be more than happy to entertain any questions. I know we have the process to go through, but...
This is a two million dollar issue.
Two million is correct, sir. Not to exceed that.
Thank you. Scheduled for a public hearing at the August twenty-second meeting. Moving to ordinance sixteen dash thirty-three, approving determination to enter into proposed leases and insurance issuance of bonds and pledges. Again, Mr. Crawford, welcome.
Thank you. This proposal is related to action taken by the Westfield Redevelopment Authority and the Westfield Redevelopment Commission following a public hearing that they held earlier this evening. This is just the introduction of the proposal. It will come up for discussion and adoption at your next meeting. What it does is, under the statute, the redevelopment authority, any bonds are required to be consented to or approved by the fiscal body of the unit, which is EOL. Also, the lease between the RDA and the RDC, those lease payments that the RDC is going to make for the property in Grand Junction are to be backed by COAT, and this ordinance is a pledge of sufficient amount of COAT to back those bonds. The bonds themselves, just to spend a minute on that, would be basically comprised of two parts of financing. One is, here's outstanding, the two thousand and eleven bond anticipation note and the two thousand and twelve one. The eleven one has a three and a half percent interest rate. The twelve has two point five seven, a total of about eighteen point nine million dollars. Those will be refinanced by the RDA long-term bonds at an interest rate of the short bonds from now through twenty-seven at a rate of about two percent. From twenty-seven to thirty-seven, which will be the final maturity, two point five five percent, which would save you approximately four million dollars over the life of the bond issue over what your interest rates are now. The second part of that, excuse me, bond issue is that you currently have in Grand Park parcels that are under an option to purchase or real estate purchase contracts. Land price in those contracts escalates over time. The remainder of the bond issue would buy those properties out and create a savings of, I think, we calculated about four million dollars over what you would be spending if you let those contracts go to maturity. So we can get more information to you and discuss it more, but this is the introduction of that proposal.
Thank you. This is introduction. There will be more dialogue, and we'll be back for adoption consideration on the twenty-second. Are any comments from the council?
Is this all new money, or is this, there's old money being refinanced?
Great, great, great question, councilor. This is not new indebtedness. This has already been stood up for the construction of Grand Park. We broke ground in two thousand and eleven. So as our bond counselor articulated, we did two tranches of money that is represented here in the form of bond anticipation note to begin the construction. Those expire in five, over the course of five years. So we're at that point, and the interest environment that we now experience and our bond rating, we have not only taken those two tranches of construction borrow, we've also, as Mr. Crawford indicated, we've taken the thirteen million dollars of real estate that we've purchased in options, and we've compressed it and created one particular debt package that will stand up on a twenty-year term. So that is a long-winded answer, say, no, it is not new debt, it is current debt that we have and obligations we have now.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Given the nature that we're going to be purchasing the property that we've been leasing, and not all of it is fields, there's a few smaller areas, correct, that could be commercially developed? If that was the case, is there a mechanism in place for those funds to then go toward this debt, to repay some of that debt? Is there a mechanism built in for that?
The bondholders will only receive a pledge of the COAT revenues to the lease payments, but that does not prohibit the city from using other funds to pay for a portion of the debt service. But that we will not guarantee to the bondholders that there is that other source of money.
And just so everyone knows, I mean, these eventually could be TIF-backed, and I mean, we will have the option when we get enough commercial assessed value and get that TIP increment coming in to then potentially move it along that way and get it out from under COAT, correct?
That's correct. The bonds could be optionally redeemed by issuing through the RDC straight-up TIF bonds to which the bondholders just have a pledge of the tax increment financing revenues.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. On that note, and to Counselor Spalderek's question, I think it's important... On that note, to Counsel Spalderek's question, I think it's important to verbalize the fact that the TIF is growing. We've had some seventy million dollars worth of commercial increment that has taken place since two thousand eleven. And to your point, ma'am, as we've communicated to the entire body of the council, based on the projection we have now, twenty-twenty is that tipping point where this is all covered in its debt service by the TIF and thereafter it continue that growth. So it's a great question and that's what we're, as perhaps John Rogers would characterize it, we're taking advantage of the TIF, utilizing it on the fat end, if you will, rather than the skinny end up front.
Thank you, Todd. Any other questions? Okay, moving along, we will consider resolution sixteen dash one nineteen. Brian, were you gonna say something to that effect?
Yes, sir. What you have before you is resolution sixteen one nineteen, which is a request to the county to consider a local option income tax that would be limited to public safety uses only. This doesn't impose the tax. It merely makes a request of the county to consider adopting an ordinance that would impose the tax. That tax not only would be limited to public safety purposes, but would also be limited to twenty-five cents per one hundred assessed valuation. Our request doesn't initiate the process any more than allows other municipalities to adopt a like resolution request in the county. When enough municipalities do, in fact, petition the county, the county will consider the ordinance. There will be no tax, no implementation of the LOET until it's been adopted by the county. This is merely the first step. It's appropriate to vote on tonight, but not necessary.
Thank you.
Counselor, if local option income tax is taken from the tax returns of the residents of Westfield and Noblesville and Carmel and whoever approves this, how do we, how do they cut it off at twenty-five percent of assessed valuation? I mean, that looks like it'd be a hard thing to govern.
No, it's not twenty...
Twenty-five cents per one hundred of assessed valuation.
Right, but that's a property tax.
No, that has nothing to do with its income.
Yeah, but LOET and property...
Local option income tax. So it would be an income tax.
Would be an income tax.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This is specifically addresses...
I'm sorry, I did say assessed valuation. I threw you off the one, yeah.
Shame on you.
I know, I do it all.
Sorry. This does address one of the issues that has actually been started over the last several years when we face the budget each year. And if you recall, even the mayor in the state of his, state of the city address talked about our challenges that we have. I think if you look at our budget pie, our public safety is the majority of that pie. And unfortunately, since the changes by the state of Indiana with the property tax caps, we have really been stressed and stretched to the limit. And we just simply don't have a lot of tools in our toolbox to pay for public safety. And we, I'm speaking for myself as part of the council, but you can welcome to the other counselors to chime in. But we recognize public safety and the quality of life here based around these services, I think that was mentioned earlier tonight, as our primary focus and our concern. And so this is a step to see what we can do to maintain the quality of services that we have. And we have limited options to do that. And this does start the process, but we do have to have cooperation from the other communities in the county or this will not happen. So we're starting that process to see where it leads. But this becomes a maximum that could be done, could be allowed, and we have to get some participation from the other entities as well. So that's my comment. Anyone else is welcome to chime in.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the resolution as presented.
Is there a second? Okay, there's any further discussion, now's the time. Did you want a second or did you want to make a comment?
No, Joe second.
Joe second, correct.
Joe second. So my comments are, this shouldn't be unexpected because we, the mayor in his address to the city, which Chuck already mentioned in November, talked about this and we do enjoy a very safe community. And it's a necessary thing to move forward with this and we hope other communities will join in. And there are needs there as well in the other communities, so that's my only comment.
Anyone else? There's a second, a motion and a second to pass resolutions sixteen dash one nineteen. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose, same sign. Motion does pass. That does conclude our business for this evening. The items on the agenda. Are there any comments from the general council? Counselors, open.
First day of schools tomorrow.
First day of school. There you go.
We have close to seventy-five hundred students, I believe. A lot of kids.
I'd like to give an update, Advisory Plan Commission meeting from last week. We had three items on the agenda. Two of those we heard tonight, the Bridgewater PUD amendment, which we acted on earlier, and also the Park Street PUD district. The additional item was the Harmony PUD district amendment for the commercial area. That was reintroduced with some changes. We did have a public comments on that and that will be back at some time before the APC. We didn't take any action on that.
Any other council comments?
Just like to say thank you to the Police Department once again for the successful Jay Claire Day at Quaker Park. Any of you that had grandchildren there or attended, it was very well-attended and a lot of children had a lot of fun. We ran out of hot dogs, the Police Department ran out of hot dogs and popcorn and everybody had a wonderful time. So I want to thank all those responsible for holding that event. It was a grand success and had a lot of fun out there helping them.
Thank you. There are no other council comments. I will call on Mr. Bertrand for some comments on behalf of the mayor. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, acting in the stead of the mayor who's out of town. It's been an exciting month, to say the least. Very active month in Westfield that all can enjoy. Most notably, we cut the ribbon on the Grand Park Event Center. I think most of you were there. What an exciting time that was and kind of a milestone for sure. And prior to that, in case you did not know, which I am confident you all do, we hosted a presidential campaign rally, despite any political persuasion, that really raised the specter of our event center to the tune of, if we were to pay for that media buy, that the coverage that we received would have been well over a half million dollars of airtime that we have, were broadcast, quite frankly, across the globe. He had, also that, we've had Move In Day with Indiana Soccer Association, Antheburg Restaurant. And we're well underway of having those other spaces leased up. There are other events calling to relocate. Perhaps there are events to the event center, which is exciting. And those are still in negotiation. Things such as a pro sports combine, professional sports athlete combine. I'll let you fill in the blanks on that one. Trade shows and things of that nature. So we're, even in our infancy, off to a very good start. And today I was there and we had active shooter training. So not only is it a sports venue and a venue of all kinds of different things, it's also a venue for our law enforcement agency to continue their efforts in keeping us safe. Counselor Ake touched on the Jay Claire Day. Mill Street construction is underway, if you have not noticed. And Jeremy and his crew are resurfacing many areas across the city in large part because of monies that the previous council passed in the form of coet and the state withheld those dollars for a long period of time and then gave it back to us, telling us how exactly we had to spend it. And so we're doing it according to the rules. And preliminary estimates on the mayor's yellow tie ball of about twenty thousand dollars for Hamilton County Youth Assistance, looks like it was raised. And then the last thing I would like to do is introduce to you a new member of our senior leadership team. You may have seen the press release today. I'd ask that Mr. Mark Reed, our new fire chief, please stand and make his presence known. Please welcome Mr. Mark Reed with us. We are so excited that a guy from Oregon decided to pull stakes and come to Westfield, Indiana. And Mark brings a robust portfolio of experienced professionalism and some west coast fire service influence. And we're excited to have him here. But I would be remiss if, not only personally, but on behalf of the mayor, if I didn't acknowledge another man that is in the room, and that's Joe Lyons in the far corner. Joe took on a role that he didn't want, he didn't really have in his professional viewfinder. And we approached him to be an interim chief and he stayed in that role beyond an interim period. And he and I talked quite a bit and he and I agreed that it was time that he was ready to move aside. And of all the transitions perhaps you've either been a part of and I know I've been a part of, this is the smoothest transition of leadership that I've been able to witness and honor to be a part of. And I think, Joe, for the public record, the class that he has demonstrated through this and he has consistently put the department, its members and this city before his own interests and is demonstrated by him relinquishing control to Mark. So I'd ask to... Thank you, Joe. So with that, Mr. President, I yield the microphone.
Mr. Bertrand, are we going to guarantee that we will not have wet paint on our fields out of Grand Park?
As one popular sitcom would say, a character of a sitcom, I know nothing.
On that note.
There being no other business before the council, unless there's an objection, we will stand adjourned.